Regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy is absent. Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Quincy's on city business. Any, we, next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Any changes or additions? I see Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to move to amend the agenda to include, under the order of new business and notice of intent, to introduce an ordinance restructuring the annual pollution control billing fees.
Councilmember Frye has made a motion to amend the agenda to, it's been seconded to include a notice of intent to introduce an ordinance restructuring the annual pollution control billing fees. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next item then is the motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next is acceptance of the minutes of adjourned session of December 9th, 2015, and the regular meeting of December 11th, 2015. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to the proper committees and departments. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first is committee of the whole, and that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. We have one item. This would be approving the appointment of the chief administrative law judge, Tammy Post, as presiding officer for the required public hearing regarding designation of a community action agency for the city of Minneapolis, and I'll move this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the committee of the whole report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have community development and regulatory services, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 14 items for approval this morning. Items 1, 2, and 3 are land sales. Items 4 and 5, I'm going to pull for amendments. Item 6 is our regular liquor business and gambling license applications. 7, 8, 9 are license settlement conference resolutions. Item 10 is the redevelopment of the property at 4414 Humboldt Avenue North, which is giving us some rescissionary rights over the property if Hennepin County and the developer fail to perform. Item 11 is an MOU with the park board with regard to the next steps on the Upper Harbor Terminal, Phase 1. Item 12 is approving a redevelopment plan in the Bassett Creek Valley area and Harrison Neighborhood. 13 is making some modifications to the Common Project Tiff District for the Lake and Nicolet Redevelopment Plan. And item 14 is an extension of contracts for emergency and non-emergency boarding. With that, I'll move items 1 through 3 and 6 through 14, holding off on items 4 and 5.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the bulk of the Community Development Regulatory Services Report, 1 through 3 and 6 through 14. Any discussion on any of those items? We'll hold off items 4 and 5. Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Frye? Okay. Seeing no further discussion on those items, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is, those items are adopted. On item 4, Councilmember Goodman?
Item number 4 is the long-awaited land sale of the Nicolet Hotel Block to United Properties. The committee moved this forward without recommendation. There's been a lot of work that's happened since then, and I'm going to move an amendment by Councilmember Frye, which is in front of you, cited CDRS Committee, number 4, a motion by Frye.
We have in front of us CD item.
Number 4.
Number 4, okay.
As amended, with the amendment in front of you.
Okay. Do you want to speak to that, Councilmember Goodman?
Councilmember Frye will speak to it.
Okay, Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. The motion is to amend the term sheet containing the terms of the land sale and redevelopment contract for the property at 33rd Street South to United Properties. This is the Nicolet Hotel Block parcel. As many of you know, we had issued an RFP about a year ago. The RFP was won by United Properties, and there were several different changes, both involving market factors, as well as the loss and gain of a residential developer, the loss and gain of a hotel operator, and, which resulted in somewhat significant changes to the design. And the design that was put forward, which was really just a massing study, but showed a building that was not quite up to par. In the interim between the CDRS meeting and today, there's been significant work done by United Properties, as well as ESG, the architect, and I am extremely pleased with the direction we've gone. So, the pushback has resulted in a substantially improved building, a beautiful public realm, as well as connectivity from Hennepin to Nicolet, and even lighting on the building. So, this is, things are looking much, much better, and I'm happy to move this motion forward, making the approval of the term sheet contingent on a final approval of the design.
Excuse me.
Happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for Councilmember Frye? Seeing none on Councilmember Frye's amendment, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then on item 4, land sale, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. On item 5, Councilmember Frye.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number 5 is the rental license dwelling revocation of Mahmoud Khan. This is an issue that had a quasi-judicial public hearing in front of the CD NRS Committee on Tuesday. I'll remind members of the council that it takes a lot to revoke a rental license, and our policy is such that if you have two rental license revocations, you are subject to potential revocation of all the licenses that you hold in the city. That was the issue in front of us, not the two licenses that have already been revoked that I believe were unanimously voted on by previous councils and this council. This was the latter issue of whether or not the rest of the licenses should be revoked. We're moving forward with the committee's recommendation to revoke the licenses, but I do have an amendment, and I'm going to read it out loud. Councilmember Frye moves to amend the action to include that the rental license revocation actions be stayed pending the resolution of any diligently pursued appeals. I'll just explain that what happens next is the applicant has the right, under the law, to appeal this to the Court of Appeals. And, so that means no one will be immediately evicted. The appeals process and the court process will have to play out first. We've only had this happen one other time that I can recall in my 20 years on the city council, so it's a very serious issue, and we took it very seriously in committee, which was chaired by Councilmember Frye. Hopefully, folks have had an opportunity to look at the record. It's approximately five inches thick. There were over 1,000 violations in various properties, and I think the case was fairly clearly made. So, I will move the Councilmember Frye amendment with regard to the revocation stayed pending the resolution of appeal, as well as the main motion.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Councilmember Frye motion to amend the action to include that the rental license revocations actions be stayed pending the resolution of any diligently pursued appeals. Any questions on that? Seeing none, I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. Ms. Segal, does Mr. Khan have the right, if he would pursue appeals on this revocation, to ask for a stay on his own? A stay of, whatever you'd call it, to eviction of the tenants, I guess, on his own?
Madam President, since it's the council that's the ultimate decision-maker here on the record, he would not have an alternate source to ask for that stay. It's not like a district court proceeding where you could go to the, you know, if you don't get your stay at district court, you could go to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals is a court of review here, but the city council sits as the district court, so it is an action that I think's in the jurisdiction of the, not the district court, the city council.
Okay. I guess my concern was, I don't want us to be doing this lawyering for him, seeing as how this process has been going on for around five years. So, it's a very, very frustrating process for the people that live in his properties that are poorly maintained, and neighbors that have to put up with it. So, I find this very, I'm glad to understand what we're doing here. Thank you. Any further discussion then on Councilmember Frye's motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then on the item as amended, item 5, revoking the rental licenses, several addresses, 42, it looks like 42 properties, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. With that, we've dispensed with community development. Onto health, environment, and community engagement, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee will be bringing seven items forward for approval. The first is approving the appointments and reappointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities. The second is approving appointments and reappointments to the Minneapolis Public Health Advisory Committee. The third item is passage of a resolution recognizing the city council as the community health board for the city of Minneapolis. The fourth item is accepting grants from the Food and Drug Administration for Voluntary National Retail Food Regulatory Standards Program. The fifth is authorizing a contract extension with Clearcore USA Inc. for lead and healthy homes outreach. The sixth item is passing a resolution delegating authority to the Commissioner of Health to enter into cost share funding agreements as part of our green business cost sharing program. And the final item is authorizing an agreement with Ellingson Health Consulting to provide health policy and program consulting services for the Healthy Living Program. And I will move all seven items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have six items for approval. The first item is the Community Engagement Coordinator Grant Acceptance from the Joyce Foundation. Second item is the 2016 National Forensic Science Improvement Grant Acceptance from the Department of Public Safety at the state. The third item is a Police, Bike Cops for Kids Program Grant Awards from Cerise Conlon and Edward J. Phillips Family Foundation. Fourth item is authorizing a correction for an adult DWI court grant acceptance from the 4th Judicial District. Fifth item is a forensic interview services contract with Corner House. The sixth item is a Bomb Disposal Units Joint Powers Revenue Agreement with the state of Minnesota. And, Madam President, if I could just comment briefly on item number 3, and just, I just want to give a shout-out to the two officers that are a part of Bike Cops for Kids who are here, Officer Mike and Officer Dave, right in the back there, for just the great work that they've done to, you know, do this program, but also just the great work that will be done with regards to this truck. Thank you.
Councilmember Yang has moved Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 15 items for approval today. Item 1 is the 2016 Reservicing Program, project designations and setting of public hearings. Those locations and dates are listed. Item 2 is the 7th Street North Reconstruction Project from First Avenue North to Second Avenue North, and this is proving the ability to do the layout and the authorizing negotiation for private property owners for acquisition and execution of easements as needed. Item 3 is the contract amendment with White Company Incorporated for Stormwater Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. Item 4 is the Maintenance Use Easement Agreement with Walker Art Center for Vinyl Municipal Ramp, and that's to allow us to proceed with that project. Item 5 is the Third Avenue South Redesign Project Variants Agreement, and that's a passage resolution holding the state of Minnesota harmless in granting a variance for the reconditioning of Third Avenue between First and 16th Street South. Following items are referred to the Ways and Means Committee. Item 6 is the Storm Pop Rehabilitation Upgrade Project, temporary easements for that project. Item 7 is an agreement with Ryan Companies for East Downtown pedestrian rail improvements, and these are improvements they've done, and we will reverse them for our agreement. Item 8 is the contract with Hennepin County for Waste Disposal Services, and that will be from a period from January 1st, 2016, to December 31st, 2017, and the rate will be $55 per ton. Item 9 is the Master Funding Agreement Extension with Metropolitan Council for the Nicolet Central Modern Streetcar Project, and that'll extend through this year. Item 10 is the contract amendment with Kramer North America for the Burnham Road Bridge over Cedar Lake Channel Project, and the amount for that is listed. The contract amendment with IPS is item 11 for the single-spaced parking meters, and that'll be through December 31st, 2018. Item 12 is the bid construction for concrete sidewalk curb and curb gutter alleys and drive approaches, and that will be with Concrete Idea Incorporated for this year. Item 13 is the bid for Fridley Filter Backwash Supply Tank and Supply, and that'll be with landmark structures for the amount stated. Item 14 is the bid for Rip-Rap Materials, and that'll be a single bid from Dresser Trap Rock Incorporated. Item 15 is the bid for Washington Marquette Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and that will be accepting the low response of bid of Meyer Contracting Incorporated for that project. And with that, Madam Chair, I move all items as stated for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that report will be given by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We have 11 items. The first is some changes to our Ethics Code ordinance, amending regulations relating to trust and accountability. The second item is settlement of a lawsuit of Chi-Tow against the city of Minneapolis. The third item is a contract amendment relating to the Convention Center railing enhancement project. Items 4 and 5 are acceptance of bids on two different projects. Item number 6 is authorizing requests for proposals for architectural and engineering design services for the 27th Avenue Northeast Storage and Maintenance Facility project. Item number 7 is adopting a Minneapolis-defined contribution retirement plan as restated effective October 1st, 2015, and some related authorizations. Item number 8 is a contract termination with Ardent Technologies for Solid Waste Information System Support and Maintenance. Item number 9 is an IT gift acceptance for February, for a conference registration for February 2016. Item number 10 is offering an extension of the SecureOnet contract for surveillance network services. And item number 11 is a accepting contribution of $2 million from the Vikings to the city of Minneapolis for the downtown East Commons Project, and authorizing execution of amended and restated charitable pledge agreement, and I believe that is it. I think we will have some comment on item number 11, but I will go ahead and move all 11 items.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to briefly comment on item 11.
Okay, Glenn, you go ahead.
Thank you. We had some discussion of this at Ways and Means, and obviously, I'm very supportive and grateful for the contributions that are coming in for the commons and for the work that the mayor and Councilmember Frye and others are doing to make sure this project is a success. I was glad to see that within this charitable contribution agreement, we have built in a percentage, which is between 17 and 23%, I believe, for maintenance and operations of the park. I think every time we talk about the commons, though, there is an elephant in the room, which is our agreement with the Metropolitan Sports Facilities Authority, which gives away an enormous amount of time and use of our, what is supposed to be a public space for private use, with no compensation to the city. I predict that the day will come, and probably soon, that we will be asked to contribute more public tax dollars to this space for the operations and maintenance of this space. And I cannot imagine anyone here supporting one more penny of public dollars going into this without a renegotiation of the MSFA contract. That's my position, and I think that is a reasonable one, considering how much public dollars have already gone into this, and, again, the absolutely enormous amount of time and other sort of concessions that have been given to a private entity with no compensation back. So, and again, I'm not saying anything I think that others would disagree with, I just wanted to make that very clear, as this opportunity has come to discuss the issue again.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Generally speaking, I do agree with Councilmember Bender's sentiment regarding the stadium use, I'm sorry, the commons use agreement. This item, however, is acceptance of money, $2 million, that has been donated by the Vikings. First, I would like to say thank you. Basically, we, you know, in terms of looking how parks are run in the city, every single neighborhood park is 100% publicly subsidized. And if you look at many downtown parks throughout the country, they are privately subsidized. The, our downtown park, the commons, is in many ways a morphing of the two. And with that morphing, it's necessary to do quite a bit of public relations, quite a bit of explanation, as well as extensive negotiating. So, right now, we're approximately 50% of the way to the $22 million goal. Councilmember Bender is correct that approximately 25% of all revenues contributed are being put in a separate bucket that will go to initially pay for operations and maintenance, but we are also having successes along the way, too. Notwithstanding a very demoralizing loss by the Vikings this last weekend, negotiations have actually, a roadblock that was previously there has since been released. And we now know that, one, extensive days that would have otherwise been taken by a soccer team will not be taken, since we're not going to get one. Number two, it was anticipated that the day of Vikings games, the day before, as well as the day after, would be occupied, at least on one of the two blocks, for placement and removal of a tent. Now, the tents will be permanently placed on the medical examiner's parcel block, which will have a long-term lease, hopefully with Hennepin County. And that should open up the space for public access, use, and dramatically cuts down on the number of days that are held specifically by the Vikings. I do agree that there is a strong desire to amend the present contract to ensure more public time, and I do think we have the levers to pull to facilitate that renegotiation. So, the public is seeing the sausage being made in this instance, and that transparency is necessary. At the same time, I think we're really on the way to an extraordinary downtown space.
Councilmember Gordon.
Well, I appreciate getting the update on this. I do believe that in last year's budget process, we actually did a staff direction so that staff would look at amending the use agreement around the commons, and it sounds like we've made significant progress on kind of the general ideas and ways we could maybe open up more of that common space for us. So, I just wanted to put in my encouragement that we continue and make that formal within the agreements, and I think that would be significant if, once we have people on board with that. It'd be good to bring it back for formal approval by the council, and then it's clear to everybody about what's going to happen with the commons once it's up and running and being used. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the Ways and Means Report.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
We have seven items from zoning and planning this cycle. Item number one is granting an appeal for a fence height variance at 2012 Cedar Lake Parkway. Item number two is granting an appeal on behalf of Wells Fargo for a parking variance varying the maximum allowed parking at 1505 West Lake Street. Oh, I'm sorry, actually, we're continuing that one cycle. So, I'll come back to item number two, but I will be able, I would actually be able, be moving to postpone item number two in order to give time to meet item number two under the condition for that agreement to be in place for the publicly available parking. Item number three is a certificate of appropriateness, granting an appeal for several conditions on 112 East Hennepin Avenue, the Nye site. Item number four is approving an application for rezoning at 528 University Avenue Southeast to establish a five-room hotel, so rezoning to C1. Item number five is approving the landmark designation for 404 West Broadway. And item number six is denying the designation application for 410 West Broadway, which is a really interesting older building, but just is, was not in good enough condition for the HPC and staff to recommend its designation. Item number seven is approving an application for rezoning at 2929 University Avenue Southeast for a mixed-use building there, and that would be rezoning to C3A and removing the industrial living overly district. So, again, I will move items one, three, four, five, six, and seven for approval, and then move to postpone for one cycle, item number two.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report with the motion to postpone item two for one cycle. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to pull items six off for discussion.
Can we pull item six off? Any other questions or concerns about any of these items? And let's vote on the zoning and planning report with the exception of item six. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.[1617.71]